You guys good? Yes?
Yes.
Call the meeting to order. Good evening. This is Planning and Zoning Commission, Town of Monroe. It is January 21st. It is 7:05. We are in Town Council chambers at the Monroe Town Hall. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Commissioners, will you introduce yourselves, starting on my right?
Michael O'Reilly, alternate.
Paul Leacy, alternate.
Leanna Ambrosi, Commissioner.
William Porter, Vice Chairman.
Pat O'Hara, Chairman.
Jeremy Hayden, Chairman.
David Townsend, Chairman.
Commissioner.
(laughing).
Paul Agresta, Town Planner.
Scott Schatzheim, Land Use Chief Director and Town Engineer.
All right. And Commissioner Lindstrom has just joined us.
Kathy Lindstrom, alternate.
And Kathy Crawford is our Recording Secretary. Item number three, anybody for public participation? Gone once, gone twice, gone. Item four, general appointments, none. Item five, regulation amendment. All right. So these are two public hearings that are continued from our last meeting where the rules of conduct were already read, so everybody is still bound by those same rules of conduct. And we don't need to reread the notice note? Okay. All right. So first up, RAA 2015-03, file number 974E, text amendment for construction yard. Anyone here for the applicant?
Yes. For the record, my name is Kevin Solely, Licensed Professional Engineer in the State of Connecticut with Solely Engineering, offices here in Monroe. I'm actually requesting that we continue this public hearing. We've had discussions with staff and we're going to take a little bit different approach based on the discussions at the last hearing. We understand the desire to establish the, you know, the business as a use rather than just the yard as a use. So we're actually going to take an approach and provide a contractor's business as the special exception use and then provide the construction yard as an accessory use. And we're going to work with, we'd like some more time to work with staff to better craft that structure so we can then present that to you at the next hearing.
All righty. Then this is continued to where, Will?
Kevin, when, what time, how much time do you have on your schedule?
I think we're in a position where if we can meet on this next week, Will, we should be ready for the first meeting in February?
It'll be February 4th.
If you, if you think that'll work with your schedule. If we need some additional time, we can certainly recuse the, um...
All right. Let's do the call.
The 18th?
No, we can go forward, schedule it on 4th in most cases. You'll come later.
Perfect.
All right. So per request of the applicant, we are continuing the construction yard text amendment, RAA 2015-03 to February 4th. Next up, RAA 2015-04, file 95975E, text amendment for automobile service station. Do I have someone here for the applicant?
Yes. For the record, my name is Kevin Solely, Licensed Professional Engineer in the State of Connecticut with Solely Engineering, offices here in Monroe.
Hold on one second.
Yep.
I'm going to recuse myself. Leanna Ambrosi, Commissioner.
All right. Commissioner Ambrosi is going to recuse himself for that. Mr. Solely, keep on truckin'.
Okay. Thank you. I'll wait for... At the last hearing, we discussed the proposed regulation amendment to allow automobile service stations in the I-2 district. I believe we were able to work through the majority of those issues and I have up on the screen Will's, Will's most recent set of comments, which I did have a chance to review with the town planner. A number of comments that he had regarding some of the other issues that weren't necessarily germane to our application. We discussed with the commission last week and I think we're okay with those. The one item that we wanted to provide additional detail for had to do with the ability for automobile repairers and service stations to have used car sales. Now, the state license for an automobile repairer does grant the ability for them to sell used cars. And what we wanted to do was determine kind of a threshold in terms of how many they may be able to do. We talked about where they had to be located, shown on a site plan, behind the building versus up along the street. We wanted to prevent that or discourage that in an I-2 district. And what we've come up with is up on the screen, under the supplemental standards, 8.2.3F. We've actually made a couple modifications. One, an item B...
Hold on one second, Kevin.
Sure.
So for the record, everybody, you are looking at town planner's comments from application review team comments dated 1/21/15, which follows...
Sixteen. That should be sixteen.
Should be sixteen? Okay. Either way, everybody's following along, okay? Yes?
Yes.
Action. Keep going, Mr. Solely.
So, item 8.2.3F-1B, in an I-2 district, facility service vehicles and customer vehicles scheduled for repair or service on premises for more than seven days shall be stored in a designated area as set forth on the approved development plan, which area shall not be forward of the principal building closest to the street and shall be screened from abutting streets and properties. No more than 24 such customer vehicles shall be permitted to be temporarily stored at any time. So this was the discussion we had regarding number of parking spaces required, it's five per bay, and does that capture enough of the parking that would be required for vehicles that are serviced throughout the period of the day? And what this does is we establish a threshold so that if a vehicle is going to be on-site for more than seven days, it would need to be identified into a storage location versus just one of the traditional parking spaces. So that does address, I believe, a lot of the discussion we had at the last hearing. We're happy with that language and I think the town planner is comfortable with that language as well. In addition, we added item C under that same section, designated temporary storage of facility and customer repair vehicles shall be in addition to required minimum off-street parking spaces. So that, that provides that additional requirement. The rest of the language is the same as we had to talk, as we had discussed, other than changing "shall" and in some of those locations. And then regarding the rental or sale of vehicles at an automobile service shop, it's 8.2.3F, number eight. The rental or sale of vehicles at an automobile service shop or automobile body shop may be permitted subject to the following limitations. A, the rental of vehicles except as loaners to a customer while their vehicle is being serviced or repaired shall be prohibited. B, the sale of new vehicles shall be prohibited. C, in a B-2 district, the sale of used vehicles shall be permitted pursuant to a State of Connecticut repairers or limited repairers license, provided such used vehicles are stored in a designated area as set forth on the approved development plan. No more than three used vehicles shall be permitted at any given time. Item D, in an I-2 district, the sale of used vehicles shall be permitted pursuant to a State of Connecticut repairers or limited repairers license, provided such used vehicles are stored in a designated area as set forth on the approved development plan, which area shall not be forward of the principal building closest to the street and shall be screened from abutting streets and properties. The visible display of used vehicles shall be prohibited. No more than six used vehicles shall be permitted at any given time. So what we did is we provided three in the B-2, six in the I-2, with the additional protection measures in terms of where they're located, how they're shown, et cetera. And then item E, designated storage of permitted loner or used vehicles shall be in addition to required minimum off-street parking spaces. The last two items that are still shown and read on Will's comments have to do with the outdoor video and video, outdoor audio and video advertisement and then...
They have to do with gas stations.
Right. For the gasoline stations versus the service stations.
There's one other change, Kevin, at the beginning, under the parking standard.
Under where?
Under the parking standard. Page three. Yeah, there. We had talked a little bit about the differences between, is the difference between gas stations and gas stations with repair, gas stations with retail? And we've had a previous application where the pump station, the pump spaces were allowed to be considered as joint, joint use or shared use in a way? So this addition kind of brings that into the code and allows the commission to allow up to 50% of the fuel pump spaces to be counted towards the retail count, so taking in that kind of joint thing right there from the bat. So we don't have to get into any analysis in the future. That was an addition to this.
So this is something that would help in the recent Conlon Farms gas station where we didn't have a codification of a qualification...
Right. Exactly.
For the, for the pump parking, that pump person to be able to walk in.
Right. So we're going to, this would allow 50% of those to count as the, as the retail spaces.
Okay. All right. More presentation?
That's it for, for me.
Okay. Commissioners, questions? Kathy?
I don't think so at this minute.
Okay.
No questions. Thank you. I have one.
Do you have a question? If, it's regarding the rental or sale vehicles and the parking. Will and Scott, this is for you also. If an applicant comes in for a facility and they, they have a, a plan with their layout and at the time that they're submitting, they have no intention of selling cars, so they have their parking and everything approved based on that, then six months later, you know, their state license grants them the right to sell cars. They decide, we're going to sell cars. We don't have a designated, designated spot on their site plan. Where does it go from there?
They don't have land use authority to do that. Just because they have a state license to do it doesn't mean they have local zoning approval to do that. They would have to amend their, their permit in order to do that on-site. I mean, they could sell cars off-site, whatever, but to do it on-site, they would have to change their permit and they would have to have the plan designate the location for where they're going to park those spaces and it would be subject to the limitations that you're putting in the land use.
And if they, if they, let's say they...
Didn't?
Their original development included the minimum number of parking spaces that were available.
That's no different than anybody else that has the minimum and wants to add to their business. You know, if somebody had a convenience store or even a gift and they wanted to put in a drive-thru, but they had no more land because the only land was in the landscape buffer, well, they couldn't do it either. I mean, land derives how much you can put on the property.
So they, they would have to come back to the commission?
Yeah.
Or just, or just start putting cars out front for sale?
Well, that would be sub two violation.
Yeah.
But it's no different than if they have on the plan the three or six and they put eight.
Right.
So, same thing.
And I think, and I think incorporating language such as this in the regulations specifically for these types of uses, it kind of raises an awareness to someone who would be bringing in an application to say, if I ever want to do this in the future, I need to, I need to do that now. And during that public hearing process, there could be, you know, through staff comments and through the discussion with the commission, a friendly reminder that if you ever want to do this in the future, either you need to show us now or you're going to have to come back to us.
Yeah. Or something for their design professional to alert them to.
Correct.
Okay. That's my only question.
Chairman?
Thank you.
Just going along with Bill's question, the, does the repairers license and the car sales, does that go through a building permit sign-off even?
Well, the repairer's license needs a certificate of location approval in addition to whatever land use approvals there are.
Okay.
And the building, the zoning enforcement officer ultimately signs that form that goes to the state after that location is approved. But then the CEO is also involved in the zoning permit.
So somebody who came to the commission for one of these applications, it's almost going to be a natural question coming from staff, where your used cars going?
Um...
If, if somebody comes in and says...
Well, the question would be, if they don't show it on their plans, the question would be, do you plan on having them?
Right.
And so you need to show them on the plan.
Gotcha. Okay.
It could also be something that the commission can incorporate as a, as a condition of approval that, you know, no, no use allowed or no sale of used cars allowed.
Gotcha. Okay.
And that's why sometimes we ask those questions to get on the record whether they plan to do it or not?
Yes.
So that we know what to do.
Okay.
It was.
All right. I don't have any more questions on this. Mr. Solely, why don't you take one step to your left, your right? Anybody from the public want to comment on this application? Anybody? Anybody? Gone once, gone twice, gone. Mr. Solely, come back in. Commissioners, any other comments or questions?
No.
No.
Mr. Solely, closing remarks?
Appreciate your consideration.
All right. Commissioners, are you ready to close this?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Takes care of this one. All right. So we've closed. Item seven, site development plan, we have none.
Can we bring in...
Uh, yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
First up is going to be SEP 2015-01-A1, file 1551A, Five Victoria Drive Associates LLC. Amendment modifications affecting a change in the number of tenants from two to one, elimination of the previously approved 330-square-foot building expansion and associated reduction in required off-street parking. All right. So this is a modification to something we approved several weeks back. For the applicant, we have...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. For the record, my name is Kevin Solely. I'm a Licensed Professional Engineer in the State of Connecticut with Solely Engineering, offices here in Monroe. So for some of the new commissioners, the, just to run through, subject sites located at Five Victoria Drive, which is located just north of the town line, from Oriage Route 25 is on the bottom of the, bottom of the screen, it runs north-south. Victoria Drive is in this location and Five Victoria Drive is located here. It was formerly Elinor Evergreen, recently changed hands and we had approval for, for indoor and outdoor recreation facility to, to move into this facility. There are some, just to backstep a little bit, there are some wetlands on the property that were impacted by the former property owner and part of the approvals were to do some wetland restoration in these areas. The previous approval had a small 300-square-foot addition to allow for the proposed Panthers Den, which is an indoor soccer training facility and a CrossFit gym in the front portion of the property. The property included a total of 98 parking spaces, I believe, and the construction of an outdoor soccer field with some stormwater management measures and landscaping. The proposed modification, the property owner has actually found a single tenant to operate the entire facility. They're Ole Soccer, they're currently down in Fairfield, and they do not need the proposed building addition. So we're proposing to modify the approval from two tenants to a single tenant and to remove the 300-square-foot building addition and also to reduce the parking spaces by approximately five spaces based on the parking requirements from the previous tenants and the proposed tenant. The resultant impact is, is five fewer spaces. He does still want to provide the soccer field, but we do have a little bit smaller total developable area. From a, we provided some plans to, to the commission for the review that showed the, showed the changes from the previous to the current application. The gradient drainage plan, the parking still remains the same, there's still a potential raise into the south of the proposed field. We just pulled these grades out a little bit. There are a few other items that we did address that you may recall. The commission recently heard an application for a fill permit on 36 Main Street, which is to the immediate west of this site. And as part of this approval, we're required to remove considerable, considerable amount of material that was previously placed in a wetland area as part of the wetland restoration area. And we had identified that as part of the fill permit for 36 Main Street, we would be bringing this material onto that property and depositing in accordance with the fill permit application, which is currently pending before this commission. We wanted to show the detail of kind of that haul road, how it would come behind the property, which we incorporated on this plan. And that summarizes that. From a proposed, we did include signs for, or we did include architectural plans which show the proposed Ole Soccer sign, which would be at the front of the main building, and a floor plan, which indicates how they're going to lay this out. They'll be using the inside rear space as an indoor soccer field and they'll have some meeting rooms and such in the front. We did review the site with both the Monroe Health Department and also Matt Pollack at the Department of Public Health to verify that sewer flows would be appropriate and the existing system can accommodate that. And I did send an email to, to Will, it should be in the record, but we are comfortable that that can be accommodated. And one last item I wanted to bring up, and I just have a letter for the commission. The previous approval granted allowed for the, you know, this is a little bit of a unique situation because we have an existing building, it formerly operated as a nursery, it has parking and land area to accommodate the, the use, and the previous approval allowed for the building to be occupied without having all of the site improvements and all of the wetland restoration work completed. Now, we have a new tenant taking the whole space, however, the project has been under construction based on the previously approved plans and the contractor has been able to complete the majority of this parking area and actually place the first base course, or they've placed up the base course for this parking area and have established an area for 73 parking spaces, which would be what was required to operate just the indoor operation on this facility. They haven't constructed the field yet, they have constructed this base, this basin. I haven't had a chance to even review this with staff yet, but what I'd like to request is this commission's approval to allow Ole Soccer to open and operate inside the building for these winter months while the balance of the site work is completed and, you know, paving season finally comes, they can finish all the, the finished pavement, the landscaping, the field, the wetland restoration, et cetera. So I did include, I just submitted, handed to the commission, this plan, which kind of shows an interim parking plan, which shows how this facility can function based on what's been completed to date from a construction standpoint. This would certainly be subject to review and approval from Conrad, the, the site inspector and under land use director's discretion, but we would request that the commission give this consideration.
Hey, Kevin, when you said base courses, is it, is there binder down or is there...
They didn't get binder down, but they did get the, the subbase.
So the gravel's...
Yes.
Are the islands there?
The islands are not in, but we can certainly look at ways to delineate that in the field so that these spaces can be demarcated.
So there's no line striping or anything?
Not yet, but I'd certainly, we could certainly provide that.
If I heard you correctly, this is something you're, you're throwing into the room at this very moment?
That's correct.
Knowing that Scott and Will need to do some diligence on it?
Yes.
Okay. So you're now looking for an answer tonight?
Well, I, what I'm looking for is the, the commission's general feel on this and I'd be confident that we'd be able to work something through with staff. But the great part is, we have a business that's relocating to Monroe, that's very excited about coming into Monroe and being a, a member of the community and they want to do it sooner rather than later.
Understood. Okay. Keep going, Mr. Solely.
That essentially summarizes the, the modifications that they're proposing. Again, just to summarize, they're, they're proposing, rather than two tenants in the building, one tenant in the building, we're eliminating the small expansion and as was provided the previous approval, they're also requesting the ability to open with the interim parking area as established, to operate the inside facility only while the balance of the site work can be completed.
And where are you on the remediation work so far?
The remediation work has not taken place yet and actually, one of the things that was discussed during the pre-construction meeting is the timing to do that. We want to make sure we do that at the appropriate time in, in the dry season rather than the wet season. So the actual excavation associated with these wetland restoration areas will take place likely in July, not until July or August, to make sure that there'll be less of an impact to the wetlands, as we are getting kind of close to those edges and scraping back.
Are you also asking, are you also thinking that the field is not, the outdoor field is not going to be built till after the wetlands remediation is done?
The field can certainly be constructed earlier in the springtime, it's a little bit further away from a buffer standpoint, from the more sensitive areas. So this could be completed in, say, April or May. They have, you know, there is some additional drainage that has to go in, in this location here, but that can actually happen even over the winter months and that would likely happen over the next, over the next few months. But this field probably won't be completed until the springtime.
Okay. Commissioners? Kathy?
Just to clarify, the training facility, does that mean there are no games?
Correct. They have, they'll have training facilities where maybe up to 15 kids will come, it'll be a team-type training atmosphere, and they have it either both indoors or outdoors. I do not believe there's any kind of competition here, it's more of a training facility. They will have an opportunity for parties on the weekends where they may have up to 15 children at a, you know, for a birthday party. And then I also believe they would allow for, you know, after hours during the week, some kind of practice facility for smaller...
Is that a full-size soccer field or a smaller?
It's, it's, it's smaller.
It's not a regulation size?
It is not.
Okay. And I was just a little concerned about the, the traffic generated if you had, you know, team playing, you know, basically have four teams sometimes at a time...
Right.
Before they actually clear the parking lot. So that was kind of where I was going with that. I can understand why you are at requesting that they take occupancy, but I was concerned about the precedent being set the last time you asked. You know, is this something that we want to do? Be in the habit of granting this kind of occupancy before the site work is done, before we, you know, where we still have some leverage?
Well, I think, I think there's a number of items that the commission can kind of take solace with. You guys still have leverage, the bond's still posted and obviously they're still subject to the same kind of instruction, construction inspections and compliance. So it's, it's both zoning compliance and a construction compliance with their permit and then the bonds are still held.
If I recall, last time you made this request, when there were the two tenants, and I may be wrong, if someone, please correct me, I thought you was talking about actually taking occupancy before the CO. If I'm correct...
Well, the building has a CO. The building was previously occupied. Yes.
Mr. Solely, I think what Commissioner Lindstrom was looking for is, there is a parking lot and the person who wanted to take tenancy only needed the parking lot that existed. And our granting of occupancy was based on the fact that he was using an existing building that had an existing parking lot. Now, what you're asking for is that shaded area, which represents what, another 30, 40 parking spaces?
Um...
Mr. Solely is asking us to consider that area in terms of using the building, which staff hasn't even gotten to yet, but he's looking for, you know, is it in the realm? Is it out of the realm?
Gotcha.
Either way, whatever we say here tonight, if staff said this can't work, it can't work.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else, Kevin? Mike?
No questions.
Questions?
Just a quick question, you're on the field. Is that a natural grass field? Is it...
Yes, it would be nat, it's a natural grass field. It would, during the previous approval, I didn't get too much into the details, but it was designed with appropriate drainage so that it can be used, you know, effectively in it, but it's, it's a natural grass field.
There isn't any lighting?
No, there's no lighting proposed. The, the new operator has expressed some interest in possibly proposing some lighting. I've explained to him that if he wanted to do lighting, we're going to have to come back before this commission, likely even wetlands, to understand what that, what those limitations would be.
Commissioner Ambrosi?
Yeah. How many questions? I don't know. That's a quarter.
The parking closest to the building on the west side of the lot, is that paved?
Yes. All this parking is, is currently paved. There's a small area here where they were going to, where they were removing some landscaped area, but this is all, the, the existing site is paved all along the front of the building.
Is there any lighting in that existing parking area?
There, there's existing building-mounted lights, which does provide some lighting through here. There is not any lighting in the parking area here.
I believe one of the other commissioners asked about lighting and I assumed that meant field lighting. Is there any parking lot lighting proposed?
There is a parking lot, as part of the overall, there is a parking lot light proposed here.
And would that, would that be proposed to be installed prior to using this lot in the winter months when it's dark?
Um, it isn't installed yet. If that's something the commission feels strongly about to, to require that, we could certainly talk to the owner and the applicant expressed that concern that they're going to have to put this lighting in prior to using that lot.
And how would you propose to delineate the parking on the gravel lot? And how would you propose to delineate the parking on the gravel lot?
I think you can, you can certainly stripe gravel if it's for a short-term duration. In terms of establishing the boundaries, we may be able to put down some timber poles or something along that line to kind of establish the edges. This isn't, this is not inconsistent with kind of parking sometimes you see at fields or other type areas where you may have just a gravel area where parking's kind of delineated in that manner. I think because we're talking about a short-term duration, I think it could be appropriate for this, for this site.
Could you, I know, I see where your temporary haul road is behind the building, but where does it go beyond that on the site? What's the total extent of the new haul road?
Excuse me?
The new haul road?
It's really only...
The proposed haul road.
It's really only, you know, so the operation of, and the removal of this material is essentially going to kind of come through this area here, and that was already previously approved and identified as, you know, within the limits of disturbance for both wetlands and planning and zoning. So essentially, they're just going to kind of come right back here and exit or, and enter the site at Thirty-Sixth Main Street.
And if that's not going to happen until July or August, and you're potentially going to be installing that soccer field in March or April or May, what kind of safeguards will be in place? I mean, you're going to have trucks moving through that area, you're going to have kids running around playing soccer.
We can certainly provide some additional construction fencing to better delineate that. That's certainly something we can incorporate actually into our soil and earth settlement control plan to better establish that, that lane, once you're, you know, kind of through this area, and probably even wrap around the detention basin, which has been installed. So we can certainly incorporate that.
I think if you're going to be doing the two uses simultaneously, you have to have some kind of barrier in place.
Certainly. Fortunately, the timing associated with this is, it's a very short window, but yes, we can certainly provide those protection factors.
Kevin, I thought that my experience is that usually when you build a field like that, you rest it for two years before you, two growing seasons before you use it.
Well, I believe...
Are they intending on using it right away?
I believe they may actually be placing sod. I believe they're going to place sod, yeah.
I know you commented about the septic, but in Town Planner's comments dated today, there's still a note, applicant should provide projected septic design flow analysis showing that you are going to be within the four hundred and twenty gallons per day.
Yes, and I apologize, we had exchanged emails and spoke to Rich Jackson. He actually exchanged emails with Matt Pollak. He forwarded me that email, but I don't think it copied out to Will. I forwarded that email to Will this afternoon after receiving these comments, and we can provide kind of a summary, summary analysis for the file.
Who did the analysis?
We took information based on what the anticipated use, use of the facility is. We spoke with Rich. We talked about an approach on how to establish what the gallon per day use is. He then verified that with Matt Pollak. So actually, you know, Rich was, Rich actually kind of took the lead in terms of some of that analysis, because it's a little bit interesting, this use isn't defined in the Public Health Code. We had used, when we talked about the Panther Den, we had used rates established in New Hampshire, which was roughly five gallons per day per participant. When you actually look at a facility like this, in the short-term duration of either a training facility or something like that, and there's no shower facilities here, so the estimated use is approximately two point six gallons per day per person, per participant, but only thirty percent of participants will actually use the system. So when we do the analysis for what the anticipated operation of this facility is, we're roughly three hundred gallons per day. The existing facility has a capacity of four hundred and twenty gallons per day.
If I understood the exchange though, that's based on a number of, like, max of four classes a day, with fifteen kids each. I mean, to me, when I saw that, I mean, I get that, but it seems like economically, is that a viable business, four classes and fifteen kids?
That's, yeah, I mean, they're running these facilities, you know, they're, you know, they're hourly training sessions at, you know, towards the end of the day.
I mean, NYA and Newtown has a session where they'll have a hundred kids in the gym.
I think, I'm not sure about the facility in comparison to the size of this one.
It's no bigger or smaller than that.
I mean, certainly, we were working with Rich Jackson on this, and we're certainly willing to do whatever he requires in terms of satisfying, we've talked about doing monitoring during the use, monitoring water usage, et cetera, but he's comfortable with the proposed use in the existing facility, and our discussions with him have been, you know, we can, we can keep track, we can monitor, and if there's an issue, the good thing is, there's more than enough room on the site to expand the facility if that's needed. However, the, at this point, the Town Health Department is comfortable that this, that the existing facility can accommodate the use.
So your projected use is below the four hundred and twenty gallons?
Correct.
Okay.
And, you know, the operation has to be satisfactory to the Health Department ultimately.
That's all we have to run up. Mr. Haidt?
Uh, no, thank you. Nope, I'm good.
Mr. Tuck?
No, nothing to add.
All right. Mr. Solly, Town Engineers E2, it's a wetlands comment. Why don't we clear that one up?
His most recent comments dated January nineteenth actually crossed out item two.
Okay.
And just to touch on that, the upwind review area is off the property, so this activity behind the building is located outside of the regulated area.
What did we end up doing with the light on the back of the building?
Those are being removed.
You, so the building has a CO, but that says, as an agricultural, as a nursery use, right?
That's correct.
So in order to get a CO for the soccer, that's a new CO, right?
That is correct.
All right. You're asking us to allow this temporary parking, which is gravel right now? My concern would be how we get this project finished, because what I'm looking at is the possibility of, a gravel parking lot exists, a guy's running a business, maybe it's not making the money he wants, and with all the timings you're looking at between paving the lot, building the field, and doing the remediation, I have a concern. And I know you have to work this out with staff, so I don't want to beat it up, but I have a grave concern that we end up with a gravel lot and no outdoor field. I know we're going to get the remediation because wetlands is hanging that. You've got an obligation to wetlands, right?
Yes.
That includes a bond?
Yes.
How big is that bond? Give or take?
It's a considerable amount. It's several hundred thousand dollars. It's a considerable amount.
Okay. So we've got, so we've got that?
Yes.
All right. Like I said, I'm just saying I'm looking at it from a experience standpoint, and I've got a concern. I know you guys have to work this out, if you would take that into consideration, but I don't see it as out of the realm. I agree with Commissioners Porter, with Commissioner Porter about lighting. There needs to be, I'm more concerned about lighting than delineating parking.
Okay.
Because if you are using this in February, and as you said, end-of-the-day classes, eight o'clock at night, it's dark, you're going to have a slip fall. Other than that, I don't have any questions. Anybody else?
I just have one more comment. Any, if we were to grant approval for using the property, it would be a temporary, and I think that there should be a, some kind of a timeline established upfront that, you know, the lot's going to be paved by make-up, something along those lines, so that we don't end up with a situation, what you're talking about, where they have a CO and we don't have a creative project.
I would, I think the owner and the applicant would certainly be agreeable to that. I can tell you, this is an operator who is very successful where he is, he has a very large following, and he's excited to be in Monroe. This field is very valuable to him, and it's another, it's a, it's a, it's a resource that his current people, he doesn't have in his current location, and he's excited to have it here. He wants it as big as it possibly can be. Addition to that, in addition to that, there's, there's already, I know there's a contract between the owner and a contractor, and in that contract is the ability to pave that parking field. So the contractor wants to be paid with that, paid for that, so I'm sure he's motivated to get that completed.
You understand, we're not dealing with the person, we're dealing with the site?
I understand.
Okay.
Yes.
Hearing where you're going with this, I just wanted to just take a moment to get a couple of things on the record.
Yep, please.
To assist us, and I just want to say that I want to get a couple of things on the record because I'm concerned about establishing a precedent with other people that are building in town and putting in new facilities. So I wanted to say that it sounds like they're entertaining this, and my suggestion would be, one of the reasons would be that it's an existing building and that has existing parking. Another item is that typically, when you're increasing the impervious area on a property, you have to have the storm drainage completed. Not all the drainage leading into it is completed, however, I can say in this case that the increase in runoff is really coming from paving the parking lot, which you haven't done yet. So I'm okay with that in this case, because they haven't paved the parking lot.
Hypothetically, you're okay with it because you haven't been able to review it yet.
Yeah, yeah, but the concept. And I'm just running through kind of reasons so it sets it, so it sets it up so that there's not a precedent for other people thinking that...
No, Scott, this is good. This is...
The other thing that I've done in the past, and need your input on for the record, is that we establish site stabilization and restoration bonds, and what I've done in the past is, when an applicant wants to move forward, we do this a lot with issuance of COs on minor items left, but the applicant signs an agreement, the bond agreement that originally was signed for this property, does have a paragraph in it that says that if you're not finished with the work, that a punch list can be written up and that it will turn into a performance bond. So for the record, are you indicating that you're accept, you find that acceptable to the status of the bond will go from a site stabilization and restoration to a performance bond?
I think that's acceptable.
Okay.
And that's reasonable. The bond amount isn't changing, and it's just a mechanism, whether you're calling it a site stabilization, restoration, or performance.
Okay.
Scott, I just want to interject here. It's a twenty-eight thousand dollar bond.
Yeah.
The stabilization bond. You can't pave that lot for twenty-eight thousand dollars.
No, you can't. So it, we can talk about that in deliberation in terms of whatever bond amount you're agreeable for covering it as a performance bond and finish the work. And then the last thing is that sometimes when there is a marginal item, and I'm a little bit concerned about the town's perspective on it, I also ask the applicant to provide a letter indicating that they are acknowledging the fact that they're taking on full liability for any issues that may arise as a result of incomplete work.
Yep.
And that I know that they're holding the town harmless for any of that.
I'm sure the owner and applicant would be willing to provide that letter.
Okay.
Right, and if we go forward with this, it would be, the CO would be temporary and maybe even specific to the parking lot.
Yeah, and some of those details, I guess you could, you could resolve during...
Yeah, it's, the temporary CO should have specificity to it, the parking lot by, the field by.
Yeah, I think they classify in the building department, there is no such thing as a temporary CO, they classify it as a conditional CO, and then they put a condition of time.
Okay. So in terms of this application for this evening, there's nothing else for us to do, correct? You guys have to take a look at this parking situation and see if it's feasible. Am I correct?
Yeah, I mean, there's, we could talk about it. You could provide some input in deliberation, and then we could work out the details, and you could do it that way, or you could table the hearing and hear what we come up with and move forward after that. That's, yeah.
Remind me how we do this? So this is a, this is a...
This is a meeting, this is an amendment modification, and you need to determine part of this is whether this is a minor or not a minor modification. If it's more than minor, that would require them to do, that would need a hearing.
Okay. So does anybody think this is major? We're reducing the scope of the project? Okay, so it's minor?
No.
But?
No, I don't think it's major.
All right, so it's a minor modification. So when we finish with this part, we deliberate later?
Yeah.
Okay. So folks, if you're an alternate, when we get to deliberation, you won't be participating, so if you have anything on this particular one, speak now, or hold your peace. All right. Everybody comfortable with what you've done on this one? Anybody?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. Mr. Solly, any closing comments?
I would just ask, Scott was, I appreciate Scott's comments, getting him on the record and the ability to talk through that. I guess I would just ask if Will has any comments we might be able to discuss before...
I mean, you know, it's up to the commission to decide what it feels. I mean, it is treading on ground that you should be careful about.
In what regard?
They have enough properties that are doing this on their own. They don't need sanctioning on this.
I mean, I understand and respect it for the business to come in, and to some extent, their business will be limited to the building because they don't want the outside, but if you do, I mean, we really need a tight schedule. The performance bond is wonderful, but the town will never call it a performance bond, so I don't really know what protection it really has other than looming money over someone's head. I mean, it is good that it's gravel out there. Again, this is, this is a unique situation, the building is existing, so it's sort of like a phased, you could consider it phased, and that is somewhat unique from a new facility.
And I do share his concern as well, and that's why I was saying that, to put it on record that it's mainly because it's an existing building.
With existing parking.
Yeah, we do get a lot of pressure from applicants who are building, putting up their buildings, and they want to open. And sometimes they don't have their pavement in, and there's safety issues here and there, and so that's why we're cautious about it, because we are used to getting the pressure for issuing COs. But that's how we, that's a creative way that we do deal with it. The attitude is that if they're substantially complete, usually it's the asphalt down with line striping, but there's items like planting and non-safety-related that they can't really finish till the, till the winter is over. We try to find a creative way. That's why I built in that paragraph into the bond and go for the letter acknowledgement of it for the last time.
All right, so if we do decide to go forward with this, we'll make sure that the record is replete with concerns, et cetera, et cetera. All right.
Are you saying, excuse me, Scott, that in those kinds of situations, you exercise, you know, professional judgment in terms of, yes, in your, in your particular case, we will allow...
Yeah.
You to go ahead?
Yep.
So we're treating each one on an individual basis?
Yeah, we take a look at, and it's mainly safety-related, but there has to be a substantial completion as well.
And I would just say, this is a little bit unique because it's not as if, it's the, it's the winter condition that's preventing the asphalt from being put down and preventing the things from being finished. The modification came up somewhat late in the fall season, where we wanted to bring this to you as quickly as possible to get this feedback so we can complete as much as we could, because they, so they can operate. They're very excited. I believe they're already, you know, they already have people interested in wanting to come to this facility in February.
Mr. Solly, how far along is the interior of the facility?
The interior of the facility is almost complete. They've had rough inspections, and since we made an application to modify this, the applicant and the owner have submitted plans that relate specifically to the operation of this facility. the applicant and the owner have submitted plans that relate specifically to the operation of this facility, not just the previously approved facility. So all the improvements inside the building have been completed and are being completed based on the floor plans for Ole Soccer. I believe they scheduled the rough inspection for this week. So the inside of the building is close to or will be finished for occupancy for this use as early as the end of January.
Okay, so you're, you're asking us to consider something for February 1st?
Just unplug the machine, Dan.
Okay.
I have two more questions.
Fire away.
Okay, one is about the sign. Have we seen it? Will we see it?
It is, it's on the plans, it's on the elevation.
It was just over the door.
Okay. And that's the only sign?
Yes.
Okay. And are they going to be changing the exterior of the building from the original?
They are not, they're maintaining the rest of the exterior.
They're the same. The paint color, I mean, they're not-
That's all staying, yes.
Anything else, Kathy? Alright. We don't take public comment on this, correct?
Not unless you want to. There's no one here anymore.
There's no one here. Alright, Mr. Soli, anything else?
Those are some ones.
Mr. Soli, anything else?
No, just, you know, obviously we, we recognize that this is a little bit of a unique situation with, with this request. You know, it's, it's nice that we have an app, that we have a tenant who's very excited about operating in Monroe and operating the space. This is a space that has been empty for a lot of years and the property owner made a considerable investment to actually get this thing back on the tax rolls and, you know, well, I guess it was on the tax rolls, the bank was paying for it. But to get this thing operating again and it's, it's pushing life back into this area. So they're excited about that and we appreciate your consideration.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Soli. Next up, SCP-2015-17-A1 File 1568A, 455 Main Street, Cumberland Farms. For the applicant. It's a change in the entrance to Cumberland Farms. Everybody ready?
Yeah.
Alright, so before you get going, commissioners, this is a Cumberland Farms which you approved in the last three months. It's a modification due to DOT on the northern entrance exit. Has everybody read their material and is aware of what's being proposed?
Yes.
Yes, yes?
Yes.
Alright. The commission has reviewed the record, so you can probably try the short version of the presentation. And if there are questions, folks can ask them. I know you brought everybody down, which we always appreciate, but this looks pretty simple. Fire away.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mark Grocky. I'm a senior engineer with PHP located at 100 Great Meadow Road, Westfield, Connecticut. And as the commissioner just pointed out, we have a modification to the northerly driveway curb cut. It's simply not a change in the physical curb cut itself, but rather a lane change modification. The plan up in front of you is the change, but I'll just show you the former approved plan really quick. Okay, so that would be much easier. My short presentation is getting longer, I'll take a second. So this was the previously approved curb cut, two exit lanes, both 11 feet wide, 22 feet total to allow left out and right out movements. And Department of Transportation felt that they do not want to restrict the full access left out or right out. So what they're simply proposing is to change the center lane, move it over, so it's one single 18-foot wide egress with a four-foot shoulder. And this is a requirement from the DOT, they do have jurisdiction over the Route 25 right of way. They don't want to completely eliminate the left turnout movements or the right turnout movements. What they're simply trying to do is discourage it. So that's like I said, they're not trying to change the width of the throat here. What they're trying to do is just, if there is a car queued up here for left out, if somebody chooses to take a right out, they can use the bypass and sneak by them, but what it's going to do is discourage them and start to allow people to utilize the right out movement down here. So that's the main change with the driveway. A couple of other minor changes are a sidewalk, ramp revision, detectable warning modifications at the ramps. And lastly, we have coordinated with a development across the street, Mr. Soli's, to modify the lane striping in the right of way. And the real modification, I know my rev, revision cloud is around the entire area, but the real modification is really just in this area here. Previously, we just had a striped island here, kind of blocking any movements because we were not aware of the crossroads center development located down here. So now that we have coordinated directly with Soli Engineering, directly with DOT, our originally proposed modifications over here are exactly the same with the left in turning movement. And now combined with Soli Engineering, there's a dedicated left for the southbound traffic here to turn into the cross, crossroads center development. So that, in a nutshell, is the requested modifications. Again, this is a requirement from the DOT in order for our client to get an encouragement permit. DOT just have jurisdiction over the Route 25 right of way. If you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Grocky. Questions, anybody?
Is that a raised island or is it just a painted island?
Where are you?
Uh-
In Route 25?
Right, Route 25, yeah, right there.
Nope, this is all, this is a left turn lane, so there's no raised island or anything here.
Okay, you said an island, so I-
It was a striped island?
That's what I-
Just, yeah, just double yellow lines.
Just striped, okay. That's, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure I understood.
Yes.
So there's still not going to be a traffic light controlling the traffic between these two shopping centers, is that correct?
There is no proposed traffic light here.
Okay.
DOT does not think there's one necessary for one right there.
Okay. And I'm not sure that the discouragement of the traffic pattern, maybe what they've done is a better solution, but I'm, I'm still very concerned. I happen to live in that area, I happen to travel these streets all the time and I am expecting much more difficulty with the traffic than I think the DOT is. And I have to assume that because it is not on Route 25, they had no comments on the traffic, the driveway on Hattletown Road?
Correct, they don't have jurisdiction over that.
Nor are you proposing any changes to that which was approved three months ago?
Correct, and then we don't propose any changes.
And they're not proposing that the driveway be connected in any way with Clock Tower Square?
That would also, yeah, it would have jurisdiction.
To take advantage of a very nice traffic light sitting there.
I'll say Kathy. Mike?
No questions.
My only question, did DOT specifically request the, the arrows to be removed?
Yes.
So they don't want any sort of directional error on the pavement, so?
No, they, it is interesting and I brought up that question myself to them, but they also feel that it's, it's, I don't personally agree with it, but this is under their jurisdiction and they just feel that it's just a further deterrent from directing people which way to go.
I just see that it might cause confusion, you know?
Right.
Only with the British.
And, and they didn't require this way only an entrance? I mean, they are not limiting this to entrance only?
No, they are acknowledging the need for the full access egress.
Anything else? Leon?
No, I don't have any issue with it.
Bill?
No.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Good.
I'm good too. Alright, Scott, Will?
I would just comment that this is under the jurisdiction of both the DOT and you.
Yes.
If your, if your, if your decision is conflicted, well, that's an issue that the applicant would have to deal with, but you do have jurisdiction over both as, as much as they do.
Are you saying we do, did you say we do have jurisdiction?
You have to approve the site plan. If you don't approve the site plan according to that and there's a conflict with another agency, well, there's other ways to work that out. But just because one, no one agency supersedes the other. They do have jurisdiction over the road in a different way than you do. You can't mandate things in the road, but you have site plan approval on the project and if yours conflicts with the DOT, with inland wetlands or with anybody else, well, that's, that's just the normal course of business. We obviously try to make everything work together with everybody, I mean, that's, that's a blame for. I just wanted to make that for the record, that you have jurisdiction over this site plan.
I agree with that, but having said that, I, I don't have any issues with it.
Right.
Okay. So commission, you're all set?
Yes.
Mr. Grocky, you're all set?
Yes, sir.
Alright. We'll be getting back to this in another few minutes, thank you.
Thank you.
SCP-2014-01-A1 File 1536A, 1428 Monroe Turnpike. Uh, we're going to take a five-minute recess while you get ready. What? We're going to take a recess. Mr. Soli, you're going to get ready for 1428. Kathy, you ready?
Ready.
Alright. We're back in session. It is Planning and Zoning Commission, Monroe, Connecticut, January 21st, 8:13 PM. We are now on SCP-2014-01-A1 File 1536A, A, 1428 Monroe Turnpike, Stone Castle Amendment Modifications Affecting Off-Street Parking and Building Architecture for the applicant.
Good evening, members of the commission, for the record, my name is Kathy Soli. I'm a professional engineer out of Connecticut with civil engineering offices here in Monroe. So we're here tonight to talk about an application, just a slight modification for the mixed-use landmark property which was granted for 1428 Monroe Turnpike. As many of you are familiar, this is referred to as the castle at 1428 Monroe Turnpike. This is a little older picture before the property was acquired. Just the Orientia, the town of Monroe, northeast corner, 111 runs north-south, Lake Zor, Route 34 is to the north, property is just south of there. We're actually just here a few weeks ago talking about the Immaculate Heart of Mary Convent, which you can see in this picture is under construction, this picture is under construction, it's currently open. Sisters love it, sorry, we're moving. Project is, this is for a modification for the landmark property, special exception allows for, in addition to a property that needs certain characteristics, this obviously meant those characteristics. There's also recently a building permit application approved for this small cottage which is on 1432 Monroe Turnpike. So this was the previously approval. Gravel driveway in, parking in front of the existing Stone Castle building, a small parking area to the left-hand side, and a two-level garage. This actually had garage doors on the lower level and three garage bays on the upper level. This provided access up to the main floor, which was the residence, and this was to the lower level for office. This just shows what was previously approved from a standpoint. I, I do have for you guys, one of Scott's comments was trying to better show how the changes were depicted on the plans. It was a little bit busy, so I just have a, a letter and then some plans that kind of show this in red so you can kind of see the differences. So this was the previously approval for the garage and schoolhouse. And in red, this shows what's being proposed as of now. It just modified the footprint of this facility. It also eliminated the lower-level garage, so there's just a four-bay garage on the upper level. There's also some modifications from a drainage standpoint. This just shows the proposed plan that's in front of you. There are also some modifications from a drainage standpoint. Previously, we had kind of two small swales uphill of the, of the castle and residential rain garden in this location, we've actually modified that. This shows in red the change between what was, what's currently proposed and what was previously proposed. It's proposing a lawn terrace up here, which is essentially a large flat area where it gets around or whatever. And this is kind of lined up so that there's a central, you know, right through the front door, through the main door, through here, stairwell up. And then this is actually going to serve, there's some concrete stairs, which is actually going to serve as like the emergency spillway for this from a stormwater standpoint. So this lawn terrace is essentially going to act as a retention basin. It will only, it'll be essentially flat and dry, but during rain events it will fill up and have an emergency spillway kind of over those stairs to kind of waterfall and cascade down that stairwell. And then it'll get into a swell and be collected into an existing catch basin, which continues to drain to the north, northwest. The proposed architectural changes to the, to the building, they have gone before Architecture Review Board. The architecture is still consistent with what's required as part of a landmark property designation. It's complementary to the building, it's, it's a very nice structure and it kind of complements the existing stonework. There's some stonework on here, but ultimately it is in line with, with the requirements. That essentially sums up the proposed changes. Again, it's just changing the footprint of the proposed garage and coolhouse addition, changing the architectural and modifications to the rear, to the rear of the landscape to provide this kind of lawn terrace rather than the other residential rain garden which was previously proposed here.
Questions from the commission, Kathy?
I don't think so, just a minute.
No questions. No questions. Leon? Bill?
No questions.
Chairman? I'm good. Dave? Kathy, you find anything yet?
Um, the exterior, you know, the architectural features, are they very different from what had been originally proposed?
Um, not considerably. Obviously with the, with the change in the footprint, the change in the design, it changes kind of some of the locations of some of, some of these features.
The style of the building changed from what was, I think, cedar shank or some kind of cottage style to a Tudor style.
Yes. Thank you, Will.
They, they are different, but they're-
They're still in line with the time-
The same family.
Yeah. And, and it's still in line with the time period and it's complementary to the existing design.
And square footage-wise?
Um, I think it was actually reduced slightly because if I eliminated the, the lower-level garage, it's a little bit slightly reduced. And still in line with the requirements of the landmark property.
All set, Commissioner Oinsford?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. I just see what looks like a technical comment about some labeling from Will. 1432?
Yeah, just housekeeping minor changes.
Okay.
Yeah, there was, and there was one comment from Scott as well, having to do with the spillway for the lawn terrace. I was able to briefly touch base with Scott. You know, the, the location of this is kind of in line to create this center line from an aesthetic standpoint. He's talking about shifting this over slightly. I think to address that and to meet Scott's concerns, we can pre, provide a liner in that area to prevent possible erosion because it is in a slight fill condition. But I think we can work through that with staff.
Okay. Alright. No other questions? Any other comments, Mr. Soli?
No, just the proposed modification, it is in line, it's a minor modification. It's in line with the previous approval. We appreciate your consideration.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright. Turn the page. Okay. First up is item number nine, which is a draft for an excavation and filling permit. Let's see. O'Hara Porter, Hayden, Tausen, and Ambrosi are deliberating. So right now you're in deliberation. Is there any further deliberation on this application for 36 Main Street?
No.
Leon, you all set? Jeremy?
I am.
Dave, anything else? Okay. Chair, entertain a motion.
Move to approve excavating and filling permit, EFP 2015-01, file number 01, for 36 Main Street. Is spelled out in the draft, dated March... No.
Everything should be changed to January 21st?
January 21st, 2016.
Got a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
You got a motion and a second? Discussion?
No. Nope.
All right. So, for the record, we had a public hearing. We are working in conformance with the POCD for Economic Development. We had, did we have referrals from outside agencies? We did. They were positive.
We didn't have referrals. We didn't need them.
Okay. We're bringing in about almost 40,000 cubic yards to make a lot usable. We got a bond of 80,000. Anything else I should give a shout out to, Will?
There's no wetlands or regulated areas on the site.
Thank you.
Not affecting any 100 or 500-year floodplain. It is a form of disturbed site, which, as you mentioned, to bring prepared for site development, future site development. There are stormwater controls and part of the plan.
All right.
That's it.
Good enough. Call the roll, starting with Commissioner Ambrosi.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
O'Hara, yes.
Hayden, yes.
Townsend, yes.
All right. Next up, bond release reductions. We don't have any, correct?
Correct.
Meeting minutes. First up, it says December 17th. Do we have December 17th?
We have it.
We had it last time.
Why did we table it? Because we ran out of time. Okay. Do you need a copy? Well, I could use a copy. Or somebody's copy. I'll share with Bill. All right. First up, December 17th, meeting minutes. Chair, entertain a motion.
Move to accept the minutes for the December 17th. It's outlined in the draft.
Motion. Got a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any edits, corrections, clarifications?
I have an edit or an admission. I did bring up the fact that the zoning enforcement officer was required to present a report to the commission that was left out of the minutes. I would appreciate that, but...
What page is that?
Well, it would have been on the end. It is not there.
You know where we go? We didn't address that. We ended the meeting early. I mean, we ended the meeting.
Commissioner's report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. David, you can make this happen?
We'll make it.
We'll make it happen.
Thank you. It's just like on the record.
All right. No other edits additions? Call the roll, starting with Commissioner Ambrosi.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
O'Hara, yes.
Hayden, yes.
Townsend, yes.
All right. Next up, January 7, 2016. That one I have. Chair, entertain a motion.
Move to accept the minutes for the January 7, 2016 meeting is outlined in the draft.
Second?
Second.
Got a second? Edits? Anybody?
It's just that a clarification. I'm sorry, I can't find it right this second, but it did say that Commissioner Hayden, it implied that he hadn't been at the meeting earlier. I wish I could, I saw it when I read them at home.
Recognize that he walked out for a few minutes when he took the break, and then he came back a little late.
I'm not quite sure it says it exactly like that. I'm sorry, I can't find this spot right now. But he was here. I mean, I think we should acknowledge the fact that he was here.
It says a brief recess was taken by the commission, then the next item was started. Ambrosi accuses himself. This is on page four. Commissioner Ambrosi accuses himself. Chairman O'Hara read the public hearing notice, and in parentheses, it says, "Commissioner Hayden, we joined the meeting with the reading of the notice."
Okay.
It's all within the timeframe, I believe.
Okay. If you feel that that's adequate, then that's fine.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
All right. Any other edits? Anybody? Anybody?
Nope.
Hearing none. Commissioner Ambrosi?
Yes.
Porter, yes.
O'Hara, yes.
Hayden, yes.
Townsend, yes.
All right. It takes care of minutes. Okay. We've got a couple of things from tonight's meeting to go through. First up would be from public hearings, the text amendment. What is the commission's position on... Are you ready to deliberate on the text amendment for automobile service station? Are you guys ready for it? Okay. You're ready for it? Commissioner Ambrosi is going to recuse himself? Who am I going to seat for Commissioner Ambrosi? Don't go too far, Leon, because we've got the other ones. We'll give you a shout.
Okay. Well, Paul is in line, but he was not here last meeting, so it'll be Michael.
Okay. Commissioner O'Reilly, you are now seated. Congratulations on your first seating. All right. So, we are looking at the text amendment for the automobile service station.
And for the commission's information, as was discussed at the previous meeting, I did do a draft in anticipation of potential action. So, at some point, if you want me to submit that to you, let me know.
Is that in the packet here?
No, it's not in the packet.
He has a possible draft if we decide that we would like to go towards an approval. All right. So, based upon what you have in front of you, which you saw on the screen tonight, where do you gentlemen want to go with this?
I can move forward with approval.
Approval? Michael?
Yes.
Approval? Jeremy?
Yes.
All right. So, the commission is interested in approving this. Mr. Gresta is going to hand out a draft approval letter. Everybody take a minute or two to take a look at it, so... One for you.
Michael.
If you want, I'll just summarize it, and you can take a minute. Are you reading it?
Yeah. We're going to take a minute to read it.
Okay.
Pens down when you're ready. All right. Everyone has read the draft approval letter?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Will, would you like to summarize?
Okay. Again, the text amendments affect several sections of the code. They deal with automobile uses specifically, automobile service repair stations and gas stations and automobile body shops. The amendment involves introducing the use of automobile repair and automobile body shops in the I-2 district. The amendments include supplemental standards subject regulating those uses, as well as how they affect it in the existing B-2 district, as well as the supplemental regulations for the gasoline stations in the B-2 district. It was, the amendments were, notice was given to the Commissioner of Public Health and the Corian Water Company. We had no responses from either. The amendments were referred to the Connecticut Metropolitan Council of Governments and to the Western Connecticut Council of Governments. The MetroCog gave us a draft response of no impact. In December 22, 2015, we received no final communication from them since that time. But more than the 30 or 35 days of referral has gone by. Western Connecticut Council responded positive local concern, but with minimal internal impact. Referral letters also went to the town of Newtown and Trumbull, as two towns within 500 feet of areas that would be affected by these regulations. The town of Newtown responded with their recommended approval thereof, and no response from Trumbull. The amendments were filed in the clerk's office as required, and a public hearing was held unadjourned on January 7, 2016. It was convened and closed tonight, January 21, 2016, and persons were for an opportunity to be heard. And the notice was filed in the clerk's office and in the Monroe Courier twice, as required by statute. The amendments, if you were pursuant to your approval, are consistent with the text amendments will further the goals and recommendations of POCD in regard to increased flexibility and encouragement of sound economic development, and the text amendments provide needed updating of outdated zoning provisions. And that this would authorize, obviously, the final publication notice requirements and filing on the landmarks.
All righty. Let's see if we can get to the end. Chair, entertain a motion.
Move to approve the zoning regulation text amendment, RAA 2015-04, file number 975E, is outlined in the draft, dated January 21, 2016.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Hayden. Any discussion?
No.
I think we'll, just took care of any kind of summary, which is what I usually do after we have a motion and a second. So, call the roll, starting with Commissioner O'Reilly.
O'Reilly, yes.
Porter, yes.
O'Hara, yes.
Hayden, yes.
Townsend, yes.
All right. That takes care of that one. Now, who carries?
Want me to go again?
Yep. Let's get Leon. All right. Next, we're going to get into the three modifications. And if no one objects, I'd actually like us to start with 455 Main Street. Any objection on 455 Main Street being first up? Hearing none. Good. First up, 455 Main Street, which is the change to the entrance. I think I'm looking for a motion. Yes?
Motion to approve the modification, SCP-2015-17-A1, file number 1568A, for 455 Main Street, Cumberland Farms.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Discussion?
I think we... I understand Will's point that, you know, we have control over the site plan, but I have no problem deferring to the Connecticut DOT and what they want for the driveways and...
I wasn't suggesting that we shouldn't approve it, but...
No, I understand, and I appreciate your point. But in this particular instance, I have no objections to deferring to DOT.
I'd simply add that since the town engineer was fine with it, and he's their town engineer, I'm fine with it. Anything else from anybody? Call the roll, starting with Commissioner Ambrosi.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
O'Hara, yes.
Hayden, yes.
Townsend, yes.
Gentlemen, welcome to Monroe.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we're going to do 5 Victoria Drive, Victoria Drive Associates LLC. All right, folks, where are we on that one? Okay. So, that's the soccer place.
I think we... I'm not opposed to this request, but I understand and fully agree with staff's comments that we have to be careful we don't set a precedent. I am not big on allowing occupancy prior to a project being completed, but this is kind of an exceptional case where it's an existing facility, existing infrastructure, that they're going to extend and add on to, and they want to use the facility. So, it does have its own unique set of conditions.
Is there allowance in the regulations for alternative surfaces for parking lots?
There is. It's part of your application and approval process.
Okay. So, in echoing Commissioner Porter's comments, I agree. We don't, we don't want people to get the impression they can build half a project and then open for business. That said, this is an already-built project where they have an area laid out for a parking lot, which we're going to get them to do some lighting, some delineation, and then along a strict timeline, they're going to do the final paving, et cetera. And that'll be made very clear to everybody. The temporary CO will specify exactly what that is, with the strict understanding that the lights get shut off the day the lights are metaphorically being said to get shut off. Yes?
Yep.
So, we're looking for lights in the parking lot that'll make it safe, even though they're temporary.
Well, are they temporary or are they...
Well, if they can...
We're going to put in that permanent...
If they can figure out how to put their... My concern is that it's lit.
Yeah, they would put in their lights.
They could do that in the cold weather.
Okay. They have a septic thing to make sure is cleared up. I know we had testimony that it was getting cleared up. There's going to be fencing between the road and the parking lot during the period of hauling. Yes?
Yes, that's a good idea.
Anything else?
Well, there's the bond issue that Scott discussed.
Now, he agreed to establish a performance bond, and what I'll do, and you can clarify it in your decision, is that I'll ask him to give me an estimate on the performance bond, and then I'll tweak that. And whenever I come up, usually what I do in those situations, whatever I come up with for a performance bond is what's required. And if they don't like that, then they don't have to get their CO, or they can come back to you. That's typically the way I address that. And normally, what I would do is have him work up the number and then work with them.
All right. So, the bond will be established by staff?
Yes. As it relates to paving the...
Yeah.
The lot to shut... Okay. Anything else?
The date. We talked about the date.
Yeah, you wanted a date that the work must be done.
Right. You're going to, whatever you end up writing up for a temporary or provisional CO, whatever you call it, will have specific dates.
What do you want? By next, the end of next summer?
Well, I believe the parking lot is going to get done as soon as paving season allows.
The parking, yes, I agree. The parking should be a, because we're, that's where we're kind of stretching things a little here, is with the parking.
Right.
I think that, what does the commission think about May 1st for the parking?
May 1st?
Prior to summer, sure.
May 1st? May 1st is fine.
I understand that you were trying to ask me something for that.
I'm not asking you anything. Just, thank you, David. All right. So, May 1st for the parking lot. I'm less concerned about the field.
I agree.
The parking lot is the biggie. Matter of fact, if they never end up building the field, that's not going to cause any heartache. It's the parking lot. Obviously, we want the field built.
Okay. So, you got the date that work must be done. You got the bond agreement, the increase to the bond to cover performance, whatever we work up. Additional light pole needs to be put in, get the acknowledging letter of liability, confirm the septic. confirm the septic, and provide a fence between, the construction fence between the hauling road and the field.
Now, now, to be clear, though, you know, we're concerned primarily about the parking lot.
Right.
And the conditional C O will stipulate, you know, the May first date for the parking lot. But should the applicant decide they're not going to install the soccer field, that, I mean, we, till the project is a hundred percent complete, we don't issue a full C O. And if they're gonna eliminate the soccer field, they have to come back for another modification, correct?
Um, usually, the way that I've always handled that is like if, if people, uh, build out their development, let's just say they're putting a building in and they're eight feet short with the building, it's a little smaller. What happens is when it comes time to release the bond, I provide a report, and you're guys, you're made aware of the fact that, hey, this building's a little smaller, it's within the same, it's within the window that you approved, and at that point, you provide input. You're either gonna accept it, or you're gonna say, you know what, we need another application.
We're talking about a soccer field.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we're, we're stipulating May first for the parking. We're not stipulating any date for the completion of the entire project. We're talking about issuing a conditional C O, which is going to allow them to occupy and utilize the facility, but we're not giving them an end date to, to, I mean, they're in there, they're using it.
Why don't you give them an end date of, of, um, November or some other, whatever, before the next winter?
September first.
And if they don't, or they come in with some amendment to you.
September first.
September first?
Yeah.
That works.
Yeah, okay.
Now, we should also, I think, note for the record, um, and Scott, please chime in. This property is under a significant requirement for a wetlands remediation, yes, Scott?
That's correct.
And that wetlands remediation has a, a very large bond, did I hear six figures?
It, I, I don't, I think it is pretty big, and in a violation situation, the bond is a, a performance-type bond. Plus, we also have the arm of the citation.
So this, basically, what I'm saying is that this applicant is already very committed to this piece of property with the wetlands aspect of it. So this is different from many things we've already seen, because he is coming in, remediating a property that was inappropriately used with regards to the wetlands. So that process, he's, this guy's committed.
Yeah, and just so you know, there's, there is one more phase of this thing in that they're also committed to resolve, um, or remediate the far rear portion of their property, which is not part of the approval. And when that happens, they're gonna be coming back to you, um, and certainly the Wetlands Commission. It's a situation where they're trying to resolve some legal issues with, uh, uh, some, on a butter who's encroaching.
Again, those things are with the property owner, that's not the operator of the...
That, that's true, right, yep.
Right.
Just letting you know that you're gonna see that too.
Alright, anything else on this from the commission?
Can I just ask a question? So you're going to approve with those conditions in this case, you're not asking for a draft and doing it afterward? I don't know which way to do it.
No, this is just a modification.
It's a modification, so we're gonna take a, we're gonna take a vote, and you're gonna, you're gonna execute...
Yep, gotcha.
Based upon all the things we just said that you were writing down furiously over there. That's what I'm saying, is there anything else?
I think that's it.
Alright, entertain a motion.
Move to approve modification, S C P two thousand and fifteen dash oh one dash A one, file number one five five one A for five Victoria Drive.
Say that five times fast. Got a motion, I'll take a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, call the roll, starting with Commissioner Ambrosi.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
O'Hara, yes.
Hayden, yes.
Townsend, yes.
Fast up, S C P two thousand and fourteen oh one eight one, file one five three six A, fourteen twenty-eight Monroe Turnpike, Lee Stone Castle. Where are we, commission? Alright. Did we have anything we needed to add to this, or was it as presented?
There was some housekeeping that needed to be taken care of.
There was a housekeeping note on the plan from the town planner, where we, we were doing something where the grass area and the step came together, yes?
Yes.
I heard some kind of sleeve.
Spillways, something, liner.
Provide a, um, liner or some other means of protection and do a shifting of...
Alright, so we got item number one, we got item number two, anything else? I thought that was it.
There's some housekeeping, you know, soap fencing, downgrading, and a basic to, but everything else is fine.
Okay. So I got a motion, I got a second?
You can make a motion.
Oh, I didn't get a motion?
Move to a...
I'll entertain a motion.
The modification, S C P two thousand and fourteen dash oh one dash A one, file number one five three six A for fourteen twenty-eight Monroe Turnpike.
Is there a second?
Second.
I got a motion, I got a second. Any other deliberation? Hearing none, call the roll, starting with Commissioner Ambrosi.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
O'Hara, yes.
Hayden, yes.
Townsend, yes.
Alright. Are there any other application deliberations or determinations for the commission this evening? Did I get everything?
Yes, you did.
Twelve, regulation review amendment work session. We had a meeting last week, and, um, Will joined us and provided three sets of documents, which basically has us reviewing all of the uses and where they are in the regulations, and whether they make sense or they don't make sense. Because before we do parking, we gotta figure out what the uses are. So that was the majority of what we spent our time on. We are gonna meet again on the...
Twenty-sixth.
Thank you, twenty-sixth.
Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. Um, that's all I have for the regulations. Thirteen...
I got a question for regulations.
Okay.
What's going on with subdivision regulations? Remember that?
Will?
Way back when?
Well, uh, we did have some work done between Will and Malone McBroom, and quite frankly, it's, um, it's a prioritization process, so they've just been getting pushed down the road for doing other things.
But we are working on some things to get more time for devoted solely to regulations, so that...
I'm just, I'm just curious, because I, we hadn't heard anything about it for a while.
It's, it's, it's...
It's in the process.
It's a victim of triage. Yep.
Commissioners might be interested to know who's on that committee?
Uh, me, Bill, and Jeremy. Alright, thirteen, correspondence other, I don't have any, is anybody else? Alright, uh, commissioners' reports. Um, trying to think if I have anything to report. I know staff is working on budget for next year, um, and that's about it. Commissioners, anybody with anything to report?
Um, I have something.
Yep.
Um, any idea, actually, this is probably, the board system?
I've shut the screen.
Oh, um, I don't think it's me. It's probably directed to Scott. Um, do you have any idea when we might be receiving a report from the Z E O?
Um, you know, I, I, I'll tell you that I lost track of that, I, I don't have an answer.
I'm gonna jump in, I thought that we, as a commission, had discussed that two or three or four meetings ago, and I, I could be mistaken, so correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought the general consensus was that we'd rather have Joe working on enforcement work than working on putting together a spreadsheet. So my understanding was that we were not directing Joe to pre, the...
It's required.
It is not, it says they may, it doesn't say they must. Read the regu...
I would like to, I would like to request it. I think I'm in a prerogative to request it. And if nobody else thinks so, then nobody else thinks so.
When was the last report, or was it ever?
There used to be regular reports monthly, and then they came very seldomly, and then the last...
But that, that was not Joe's doing, that was the commission's direction.
Oh, I, I, I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying, yeah, when we had been getting these sets, and they used to get them monthly, and then they were getting them...
So for, so for Commissioner O'Reilly's information, several years ago, there were some grave concerns about Z E O doing their job. It, it was more of a personnel matter. So we got a new Z E O, and he started to come to us monthly with a spreadsheet of addresses. So it would say Mr. O'Hara's house, Mr. Porter's house, Mr. Ambrosi's house, Mr. O'Reilly's house. And we would go through it with absolutely no real resolution from this body, legislatively or administratively. Because under the statutes, what we do is we vote the powers of zoning enforcement to the Z E O, and we ask the Z E O to do zoning enforcement on our behalf. Um, we offer sometimes direction in one area of, of importance as opposed to other areas. But we would get these reports with really no, we wouldn't take a vote or anything like that. It was more airing of, of what's going on with...
Who is information?
Yes. So after, after a while, we, we asked ourselves, is this a good use of the time of the Z E O? Because the Z E O has a set work week, and if the Z E O is here for an hour, the Z E O is not somewhere else for an hour. So we decided, for a couple of reasons, to stop that process. One being, we weren't really affecting what was going on from the zoning enforcement standpoint with any efficacy. And number two, we were creating a public document that was basically airing people's dirty laundry. So we decided not to get a report. Um, and that's, that's kind of where we are.
And I will just reiterate what the regulations say.
And I'll reiterate what Commissioner Porter said, it's not a must, it's a met.
Well, it's a, no...
It's a shall.
I, I will read it, it's, uh, "Z E O report to commission. The zoning enforcement officer shall periodically report to the commission regarding the issuance and status of pending zoning violation orders and notices."
This is not a criticism.
So, Mister Chairman, I suggest that you determine how periodically you would like to receive these reports and request the Z E O follow your recommendation.
Well, and I, I think, as Wes said earlier, you know, does a majority of the commission want to hear from the Z E O? Commissioner Lindstrom has made her position very clear. Is there anyone else who feels we need to...
Excuse me, just before you interject, um, I just wanna say that this is not a criticism of Mr. Chapman. Any stretch of the imagination, that is not, a report is just a plain old report. It's nothing to do with his ability to get his job done.
Kathy, I, I, I don't, I don't think for a moment that you're criticizing Joe. I, I think that this commission's been very happy with what the Z E O is doing. So Commissioner Elise, you have...
Yeah, um, would it be out of line to request that he just provide, um, you know, not, nothing official, but documentation of he must keep records of his activities, either weekly or monthly? If he just cop, get a copy of his...
He keeps records which, um, you know, when I get them in the file here in front of me, there'll be records of, uh, sent a letter to Mr. O'Hara, um, you know, had a meeting, you know, for, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
Um, and when he has those, he places them here, and I pass them up and down the dais. Um, but he doesn't keep them in a spreadsheet format, so again, we're getting back to making paperwork to create a different format that he doesn't normally have. Again, I, I...
I would suggest, rather than have him do additional work, which I agree is not necessary, he could just provide us a copy of, you know, the information he already has documented, if that's...
Which when he, when he sends out violation notices, um, chairman gets those, and everybody gets to look at them. You know, so they're, they're here at our meetings.
The, the entire committee looks at them?
Yeah, we pass them down, up and down the dais.
I haven't had, I haven't had any in, in, you know, this month or the last. Again, it comes back to a question of, you know, use of our time, use of, of the Z E O's time. Um, as, as you would note from Commissioner Porter's question, we're still working on getting towards the, the subdivision regulations. It's been pushed down the road because of, as I, as I put it, triage. So, I, I mean, for me, I don't, I don't need a report from Joe. I do, I would note, Will doesn't he submit an annual report? It indicates the number of cases, he, it's, it's a, it's a general year...
It's just a number, that's all it is.
I mean...
How many permits issued, how many violations issued, it doesn't tell you who, what, or where.
Right. And, and you know, just for everybody's knowledge, 'cause we do have some new folks on the commission, you, you took an action, not as individuals, but the commission took an action when Mr. Chapman was hired a few years ago. You voted, and you, you gave him your zoning enforcement powers. You can vote, take back. But he has them for you, and, and he or whoever is in that seat is doing the zoning enforcement. Um, when you see issues that are relevant to zoning enforcement, the practice has been, take one picture or two, send him one email, and then he deals with it. The reason why you don't send him a constant stream of emails is because that becomes a public record. And if somebody gets into a court case with a zoning enforcement issue, and Commissioner X has sent twenty-seven emails, it looks like the town is prosecuting because Commissioner X. Joe, Joe handles the matters as best he can. Sometimes there's delicacy involved, and sometimes there's higher priorities involved. Um, just so folks understand, Joe also handles building permits, um, general questions. He's part of the inspection process for all the buildings that go on in town. Um, what else does Joe handle?
Sign from, building permits.
Yeah.
C O's.
Certificate of compliance, his requests for people who are financing, either letters saying they're not in violation.
Coordination with the well and citations.
Yeah, one of, one of the more contentious issues that's popped up in the last couple of years with all the banking stuff going on, you go sell your house, somebody goes through with a fine-tooth comb, and the Z E O has to sign off on that. And if, if somebody put a bathroom in twenty-seven years ago, and there's, and you've got a closing on Friday, you gotta have that sign off.
Yeah, they all call us the day before they need it, too.
Yeah.
And it's our fault that they didn't have the permit.
Alright, so where are we, are we, do we need...
Well, I, I mean, me being new on the commission, and sure, some of the people new on the commission, I don't, I don't have a problem with him giving us some kind of report. I mean, not that he's gotta give it to me all the time, but since I'm new here, I mean, we would like to see what's going on. And I can understand Kathy's point in that way, but it means people here that don't, we don't really know what's going on, unless we go and we search our own, and we'd have to talk to Joe our own.
So what do you, so, can, what, what are you, what are you looking for in, in, in terms of a report?
I mean, he had produced a spreadsheet with chapter and verse, so it would say Pat O'Hara, um, parking dog, you know...
No, 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 I mean, I mean, the violations that he has out there, I mean, if it's, you know, I mean, if there's some major violations out there, then...
I guess that's...
That's what I used to look like.
Right, right.
I think Bill's suggestion that you recommend X, some periodic, you know, once a quarter, once, whatever, I mean, I, I don't want it to be unreasonable.
So can I see that one first?
Yeah.
See, the, when we used to get this, the problem was there was nothing we would do with it. The Z E O had to put the report together, the Z E O would, would come and present it some of the time, which is taking away from him doing other things. And what do we do? We, we, we were not actioning this information, is my point.
No, 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 and I have, I understand that, but if we see the same thing over and over and over again, then we need to question the Z E O often that hasn't been taken care of. You understand what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, if it's the same thing over and over and over again, I can understand if you go down a sheet and it's, it's there, and then the next time it's not there, then we know that's been taken care of. But if it's there over and over and over again, and it goes longer, a period, 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 we need to find out why that's not being addressed.
And again, I would offer, very often, it's not being addressed because zoning enforcement takes time.
No, I, I got all that, I mean, but...
No, no, but, but Leon, you're saying if, if one, two, three Main Street is on there for, if, if we're getting a quarterly report, and one, two, three Main Street... and one, two, three Main Street shows up three quarters in a row, you're saying we need to find out what's going on. What I'm saying is, one, two, three Main Street could be there for two years.
Well, it could be, but is there a cease and desist on it, or is it just ongoing, or how do I know all that? How would I know that?
With re, with regards to what the commission's been doing in terms of zoning enforcement, we're trying to keep the town out of protracted legal battles by seeking compliance.
And...
Um, I'll give you an example that was brought up recently, the bus barn. So what's that going on now, two years?
Right.
So you would essentially see a report that keeps saying, "The bus barn, the bus barn, the bus barn." So you have...
And, and I, and I got the legal aspect on it.
Right, but the, but the bus barn application is gonna come to you in the next four to six months.
And I, and I grant it, and I got that.
So it's gonna resolve itself, and while it would show up on a zoning enforcement report, what are you gonna do about it?
I have a comment, I'll just plug in.
Well... I know about the legal aspect, okay, 'cause...
That's fine.
But when we hand out, if we're handing out a cease and desist on one thing, and we're not handing out another thing...
We haven't handed out any cease and desists in the last several years, 'cause we're trying to get people to be compliant. Cease and desist costs money.
All right, so we haven't handed any of those out?
Well, yeah, it's, it's, it's not that, it's not one, two, three got one and four, five, six didn't. And again, part of what the ZEO does is within his own discretion.
I will add just two comments. Number one, I believe we're all on the same team, this is information that I think should be shared. Number two, people long before us felt that this was important enough to put this in the regulations. Somebody else besides me felt that as a commission, we should be aware of the existing violations and how they are being addressed. Not that, not that I put this in the regulations, somebody else did, and they did it for many years. And...
Let, let me try to put some closure on this for tonight, um... Why don't we do this? Um, I've had some discussions with Will and approached the, that also with, um, Joe, in that we're planning on trying to get together a little bit to talk about improving our coordination and, and, um, in, in the office, so why don't you let us meet? And we'll brainstorm this thing and see if we can come up with something as a recommendation to do for you. I think that it is important to keep it out, we wanna keep it off of the agenda and out of the public meeting, but maybe look at getting some type of information to you guys, you know, in, in, in the pen.
You just violated FOI.
No, that's still, it's, it's information that's available, it doesn't have to be available through the public meeting. I mean, that's, it's information that's available, uh, and you're entitled to that, um, it doesn't have to be on an agenda.
Why don't, why don't, you know, why don't you folks see if there is something that can provide some kind of generic information about what's going on? I myself don't feel the need to have the ZEO reported, reporting to us. Um, I'm gonna disagree with Commissioner Lindstrom simply because my experience with zoning in this town dates back about fifteen years. And when you look at a lot of the things that were done, including personnel issues where the ZEO wasn't doing his job, I, I'm not so concerned with what's in this, it's, what's in this book as, as, as you had portrayed it, meaning that, you know, people thought it was important, because they didn't do it. And there was no zoning enforcement done, which is, which has caused some of the heartburn, which we're working our way through year by year by year. I get the idea of wanting to know that the ZEO is doing his job. Part of that comes from what staff is doing, you know, Scott's the land use group director, you all have access to Joe. Kathy, I know you've, you know, gone and spoken with him, and you're all welcome without over, overtaxing Joe, you know, to have a conversation, to send him an email with something. For me, you know, if you can come up with something that's...
Yeah, let us talk about it, we'll, we'll, uh, and then we'll get back to you. Um, I think there's some merit in what you're saying, even from a perspective of making our offices run more efficiently and, and that kind of thing. So it's, it's not a bad idea, um, but I'm not exactly sure, um, what form it would take and how use, as, as Pat says, what you would actually use it for other than to just know that, hey, this is what's going on. So let us meet and talk about it and see if we can come up with a plan for you. So at the next meeting, we can definitely have something for you.
Okay.
All right, not, not the report, but we can have some ideas.
Process, okay.
But, but again, I don't...
And I'll say that I, I did say that previously and didn't do it, uh, there was some confusion about it and...
And the holidays got in the way, I, I understand.
Didn't get that done, so, I acknowledge that.
Well, bring back what your brainstorm is to this commission, and this commission can make a decision one way or the other as to what you want or what you don't want.
Okay, we'll do it.
Anything else? Take a motion to adjourn? We're adjourned.